Mr. Peterson got called at seven o'clock for an emergency thing that he has to be down in Boston at Mass General. And he's gonna have to leave the meeting. Without him, we will not have enough of a quorum to continue it. I mean, to continue working on it tonight. So we may, we probably will have to continue it to the next meeting, and then most of you will have more of an opportunity to speak at that time. It's not that we don't want to hear from you, it's just something that came up for him. And unfortunately, we apologize.
But we're gonna try to whip through some of the other business and get to as much as we can, but we can't run without Jeff, so.
Because we just have too many absentee people this evening, that are out of town. So, do you want to even bother with the planners' report, or you want to just skip over that in order to get?
Well, the problem is we have all public hearings, so we can't do anything faster.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. So go ahead.
We're tied to the time. Okay. Plus, I never get this much of an audience to hear all the news of the town. So on Tuesday night, the DPW Police Department and I met with the Board of Selectmen to discuss uptown parking. We had had a survey open, a survey, I say, it was really just a comment period, but we had it open. You'll notice cones are back up over on Central Street. That's because people really were frustrated that people continued to cut off from the center lane, the inside lane, over to Central Street. So, and the selectmen kind of lamented the loss of those vertical barriers. So the next morning, Chris Gallagher had those cones up faster than we could say booze. So that was great work on his part. So, we talked about parking, and right now, here's what our next steps are for uptown. For the folks at home, or listening, we have some development coming uptown. We have Shovel Town opening. I know we've been saying that for a while. I could say that, that's my later update, but yes, we know everything right now is backlogged. They need a transformer replaced, and their materials are late, so that's why it keeps getting pushed. They're hoping for September. They have filed for their pouring license from the selectmen. So it is a work in progress, it's just everything is taking longer, and they're more frustrated than anybody. But in anticipation of Shovel Town, and we have some apartments opening next to the post office, we're trying to get ourselves organized for parking. So one of the things we'll be working on in the near term, this summer, is creating a parking map that can be printed, used digitally, and perhaps even posting one physically uptown somewhere, so that folks can get familiar with where there are to park. One of the key things we presented to the selectmen is that we had a drone fly, the police department has a drone, so we had them fly during one of the busy Marilyn Rodman events, and we learned that there is a lot of uptown parking available. I mean, this lot had about 14 cars in it at the most. The Uptown Schneider lot, which we're now calling it Uptown Schneider Lot, because people didn't realize the Schneider Lot was close. It's actually right at the end of Bird Street on Railroad. That had two cars in it. So we're gonna try to make that more attractive, that's actually, I should get, hold on, I'll stay on my list. We're gonna develop a policy for the Board of Selectmen to review regarding takeout and five-minute parking, because some places have 15-minute parking spaces, others don't. A lot of them want them, and it's just, it's not fair that some have them, some not. So we're gonna come up with something to see if the selectmen want to approve that. We're gonna work with Bethany Church on their future parking options. They mentioned that they'd be willing to work with us. We're gonna continue to improve the wayfinding signs. We missed one up in front of O'Reilly's, because the arrows going the wrong way, so we need to have parking heading down Bird Street. We'll do that, and a couple more. We're gonna be looking at handicap accessibility to make sure what's out there is adequate, and where the locations make sense, and make sure they're all in good condition. And then, we want to rename and clarify the name of parking lots. We actually have three lots. We have the new Uptown Schneider Lot, which is 41 spaces, and we are gonna be asking for more. But again, it's never full, but we're trying to fill it. The Central Street Lot, we've learned, is also called the Veterans Lot, so right now, I'm calling it the Central Street Veterans Lot, but maybe we can get something more elegant, but I don't want to offend veterans. But it's also not a very good lot to honor the veterans, so we're trying to figure that out, come up with something that works. And then, the Town Hall Lots in discussion. So we do have those lots. We want to improve the appearance to the entrance to the Uptown Schneider Lot. Right now, you know, if it were me alone, I would be nervous to go there at night. It's kind of dark, and you know, it's on the other side of the track. So we're going to add some planters and flowers, and maybe some solar lights. DPW's gonna look into whether they're able to add more lighting there, add some signage, so then that way, when you're driving down Bird Street, it looks welcoming and not creepy. And then, we want to, we're working to improve the condition of the Central Street Veterans Lot. I was there the other day, it's actually jam-packed on a Friday afternoon, and I could not find a parking spot. But it isn't, it's just in very poor condition. Senator Feeney and Rep. Barrows have earmarked $50,000 for that. We just need the governor to sign it, we hope, so we're working on that. And then, Chris Gallagher and the DPW were able to get a grant for additional crosswalk blinking lights, like the one we have over by the lot, serving the library, kind of by O'Reilly's. So we're gonna do a couple of those, maybe, probably the one, the middle crosswalk, sort of on the Judy's floor side of the common, and then down at the School Street, South Street intersection, we'll be using those. So, that might not come until the end of the year, but that's something we're planning for. For Walnut Street, we filed a Mass Works grant for the signal and sewer work on June 3rd, and there's a neighborhood meeting hosted by the development team that successfully was awarded the opportunity to develop that site with the Housing Authority. That meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 15th, at 7:00 PM at the Hampton Inn, to Foxborough Boulevard. So, I will not be part of that. I've been sort of on the town side of things. This is more of the developer side, so I'm trying to keep it arms-length, I have nothing to do with it. In fact, until today, I had a conflicting meeting. I already went over Shovel Town, and just to let you all know, it's that time of year, it's vacation time, so we're dealing with some vacations, and over the next couple weeks, so be patient, as you know, we've been without Gabby this week, and then Diana's got a couple vacations. So, one thing we were considering is July 28th, Gabby and Diana, right now, are probably not gonna be here. I would rather not run the meeting myself, but I will if I have to, but I know, Kevin, you mentioned you might have a conflict, so.
I'll double check.
Well, I just thought maybe we might want to cancel that meeting, depending on the workload, and that's all I have.
Okay. Yeah, any active subdivisions tonight?
I don't think so.
Okay. And we have some minutes that we just need to sign.
Yeah, those ones are already approved, and I sent out April 28th and May 12th over the past week or so.
This is, this is May 12th, right here.
No, that's April.
It says to be signed, approved.
Yes, that was approved on May 12th.
Oh.
So we have new ones to approve tonight.
Has anybody had an opportunity to take a look at them?
I did, I was very impressed.
Wow.
Gold star for Diana.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve them. And that was May 12th, was it?
April 28th and May 12th, there was two.
Well, I will take April 28th, where I said make a motion, we approved the minutes from the April 28th meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would make a motion that we approved the minutes from the May 12th meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have one or two minutes till, oh no, it's 7:10 on my computer clock, so that's official.
Yeah, that one's a little slow.
So it's National Grid, if you want to come up and say.
So yes, we have a public hearing, site plan approved for 63 Elm Street, for the construction slash installation of substation-related equipment and facilities at the existing electric substation by Mass Electric Company. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a better one, something.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And just a reminder to the board, not to cut anything short, but you have about 10 minutes if you want to stay on schedule. But, obviously, don't cut short substance, but.
10 minutes, page?
Or less, in case of questions.
I'll be brief. Just for the record, my name is Joshua Lee Smith. I'm outside counsel for National Grid. The applicant actually is Massachusetts Electric Company. So we're here this evening for what I think is a pretty straightforward project. I've provided you with a slide deck, and I will share my, attempt to share my screen. Okay, wonderful. So, this is obviously an aerial depiction of the existing site. The property is located at 63 Elm Street. This property is within the town's limited industrial zoning district. And as you can see, the lot itself is pretty small. It's about 22,000 square feet. I've got my cursor here, right here, this is the, this is the existing lot. Across the street, you can see, obviously, this is a public works facility, and to the east of the property, going up Elm Street, is also an outdoor storage facility, I believe also operated by a DPW. To the west, the neighboring property is a photovoltaic energy system, and then the rest of the surrounding area is really woodlands, town-owned property. So this substation has been in existence, energized, for over 65 years. It's been there for quite some time. It is within the limited industrial district, it's not near any residences. The closest residence is over, well over 200 feet away. So what the company is essentially looking to do, and this is just, quickly, this is a depiction, for those who are not familiar with the site, this is the existing condition. What the company is looking to do primarily is to replace and upgrade and rebuild this substation. So, as a layperson, you could probably look at this and see and observe that some of the equipment, some of the structures are, look pretty old. They are. They are, I won't say that they're outdated, but they are definitely in need of replacement. The general purpose and intent of the project is for reliability, which is obviously a prime obligation of the company, to be able to continue to provide a reliable electric service. And so that's really what the purpose and intent of this project is. And essentially, what's going to happen, as you can see here, with respect to the existing conditions here, that all of this equipment that you see here, the vast majority of it, as well as the support structures, are going to be replaced. And in its place, towards the rear portion, and this view right now is, if you were standing on Elm Street, looking at the substation, the replacement equipment, the new equipment, which will consist of typical substation equipment, transformers, circuit breakers, disconnect switches, et cetera, will be located in the rear portion of the property. So, this substation, which again, it's a relatively small lot, only about 22,000 square feet, the replacement upgraded equipment will be located in the rear, farther away from the street, farther away from the public view, farther away from people being able to see the substation, which I think, generally speaking, is probably an improvement in and of itself. However, in addition to that, and as you can see before I move on to the next slide, there's no, there's nothing in the way of landscape buffering here. So the company has, is taking the opportunity to, in addition to replacing the equipment, which is the primary purpose, to improve and maintain reliability, they are also looking to push back a portion of that fencing, where you can see equipment now, push that back to, so it is essentially flush with the gate on the left, push that back, and then plant a pretty robust set of trees. Evergreens, non-desiduous, right along the street. In addition to that, they're also looking to also install or plantings along the portions of the sides of the substation as well. So, it's really two main parts. Replacement of equipment that needs to be replaced, and then part two is aesthetics, beautification of this substation site. This is a depiction of the proposed location of the new equipment, generally speaking. So, right here, this is the rear portion of the site, right here, this is essentially the street line, edge of pavement. You've got your existing driveway here, and then the security fencing will be expanded by about 3,000 square feet in this location here. Again, in the rear portion today, it's woodlands. There are no residences, no butters, that would be impeded or materially negatively affected at all. In this area where the expansion's occurring, this right here is where the existing equipment resides, this is going to be removed. This is that gate that I was mentioning before, and as you can see, this line is going to continue now, whereas it currently is up here, closer to the street, everything's gonna be pushed back farther away from the street. And this next slide here, I will show, this is aerial depiction with some overlay showing the non-desiduous plantings that are proposed. Again, along the primary front portion of the lot, as well as a significant portion of both sides. Beyond that, as you can see, underlying this aerial, you can see that there's already an existing natural vegetative buffer that's been there for decades. Large portion of that is going to continue to remain. And again, to remind you, and to remind the audience, to the right is a DPW outdoor facility, across the street is a DPW facility with bus, school bus parking, and then to the left is a solar field. But regardless of that, the company is still looking to provide this very nice landscaped vegetative buffer. This is just some samples of trees, so you can see visually the types of species that are being contemplated. So, sort of, there is a mix of some shade trees, as well as non-desiduous evergreens. I think a vast improvement over what's there today.
I tend to agree.
And this is a depiction, now this is a little bit misleading, because the photo is large. This is an example of a piece of equipment, I think this is a recloser. It'll be similar in size to what's there, but just to give you a sample of the type of equipment that's being, that's going to be proposed, as a replacement. Another piece of equipment here. So that's essentially it. I'd love to open it up to any questions that staff, the board members, or the general public may have. Thank you.
Just a quick question, I mean, so you're replacing this, will it generate or handle the exact same amount of power? Will there be an upgrade to the volume of power, or anything like that?
My understanding is, well, first of all, this is a, technically, it's a distribution substation.
Right.
My understanding is that there's not going to be an increase in the capacity. This really is a maintenance and repair type of an activity, but it does require the rebuilding of the facility, because, as you can imagine, you can't, you can't just, it's not like you can replace the batteries and put new batteries in. The existing infrastructure and equipment still has to be running at all times. You can't take an outage in order to install various pieces of new equipment. Everything has to remain in place, and the new equipment has to be installed behind it. Once the new equipment is fully energized, then you can decommission the front portion, the older equipment, and have everything removed. That's why you need, the company needs to expand in the rear, they cannot just piecemeal swap in various pieces of equipment, they have to expand it.
Okay. And will you be staging any and all equipment onsite, or will that be remote, and will there be disruptions, because it's kind of a tight street?
So, I will say, I have my colleagues, my project team members who are on the line, I see Orlando Martinez, he's the project manager. Orlando, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, everybody. Yes, so the question regarding staging of equipment, et cetera, we are looking at various areas. We have spoken to DPW about working with them to make sure that everything flows smoothly when the construction starts. We will plan to have some equipment onsite. We also plan to use some of our neighboring substations to store additional equipment. So, our goal is really to stay out of the street as much as possible, starting, we want to start construction in the fall, so, but in order to do that, we have to do some construction in the summertime. We want to do that in the summertime, so that we avoid the school, the school period. So we are trying to make sure that we have as minimal impact as possible, given the construction on the neighboring community. I don't know if that answered your question.
It does. And do you have a projection on the duration of the project, your time window?
Well, if everything is approved, with, within the town of Foxborough, we hope to begin official construction in October, and we hope by this time next year that the new substation will be energized. We'll still have to do some cleanup and restoration, et cetera, by this time next year, we will, the new substation should be, should be able to be energized.
Thank you. Anybody else in the board? Anybody in the audience have any questions regarding this? Just state your name and address for the.
Tim Sullivan, 171 B Street, Fire Room.
You have to.
In regards to this, the transformer that is showing.
Excuse me, sorry, you have to come to the microphone.
The microphone.
For the people at home. No, it's okay.
Oh, speak louder?
Well, they can't hear you at home.
I want to see your beautiful face on TV. Right back at you. Tim Sullivan, 171 B Street. So the date of these transformers, I know, 65 years, you said, right?
65 for the substation.
Give or take, right? So they're probably Ascarrel filled, right? Cancer cause an agent. So how about the cleanup? How would that evolve because of PCBs?
With respect to the.
I can answer that.
The transformers, insulated media, I'm sure is Ascarrel at that age. I'm an electrician, that's why I say it. And it works with jabs.
So we do, we have a team that is going to be making sure that the equipment that is removed is carefully, it's gonna be carefully removed, packaged, and sent to a proper disposal site to basically make sure that none of the, or the current oil that is being used is released, and we want to make sure that, we do that, the oil will be drained onsite, transported away, and then the equipment, and any residual stuff, will be transported in a covered situation, so that nothing is released. So we do have a team of compliance, environmental folks are gonna be helping us make sure that we stay, we keep everything as clean as possible.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for your question.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience have any questions regarding this?
How large are these trees that you're gonna plant? How large are these trees?
How large are they? So they, they range in size. We did include as part of the drawing, in terms of the height, they'll range in between 10 to 12 feet, but it depends on the species. So between 10 to 12 feet, I think for the shade trees, and 6 to 8 feet, it looks like, for the, for the evergreens.
Right here.
Yes, sir, just your name and address.
Johnny Gattani, 7 Willis Lane. Is this gonna improve our, when we get power outages? We always seem like to be the last to get back online. Is this gonna improve our backup efficiency to get back online quicker in any way? Because I know the last two power outages cost me about 800 bucks in the refrigerator whiz.
Orlando, do you want to take that?
Yeah, I don't particularly know about the line.
Since it's an old, you know, 65-year-old voltage station, they call them?
Mm-hmm.
65 years, I mean, is this gonna be an improvement to get our power back up quicker? If it's not a tree hitting the line, you know, something like that, or a branch?
Go ahead, Orlando.
So, so you have, you have, you have stated usually the problem when, that customers lose their power is because of the power lines that are out on the streets, typically not caused by the substation. In this case, though, as you mentioned, this substation is quite old, and there have been certain issues that we've had there with equipment not, not operating properly. So the answer to your question is, yes, it will be improving the reliability of the entire system. However, lines, the distribution lines, they're still gonna be susceptible to winds and trees falling on them, unfortunately, but in terms of having a more robust substation, the improvements that we are making here will certainly help in the situation of making the electric system more reliable.
Why do we wait 65 years? Why don't we have preventative maintenance, and do it maybe every 20, 25 years when needed? 65 years seems like a long time to let it go like that.
Well, I don't want to mislead, and the, this rebuild project is really a revamping of the entire site, as you can, as you can tell from the presentation. That's not to say that there hasn't been ongoing maintenance, repair, replacement of various equipment throughout the life of the substation. There absolutely has, has been, but the company felt that some of the equipment, some of the more major equipment, it has gone beyond its useful life, and it is time to replace.
What about tree trimming? You go down B Street, you got pine trees going through the wires and everything else, why don't we trim those back and be on the preventative side?
No offense, but that's got nothing to do with this project. It doesn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin. Excuse me.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think visually, it's gonna be a marked improvement. I travel, travel by there twice a day.
I think so as well, and there's nothing else. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this, I submit it.
With standard conditions?
Yes, with standard conditions.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's, well, a couple of minutes before 7:30 PM, so, at 7:20 PM, public hearing for a special permit to Mechanic Street, conversion of an office commercial building into a mixed-use project with one office commercial unit and five one-bedroom apartments from Gibson Corner Realty Trust. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Lovely, I'm the attorney for the applicant, which is Mr. Gibson, a trust that he controls. This is an existing building at 10 Mechanic Street. It's right next to the Union Straw Restaurant, the old American Legion Building. This is a proposal under the Foxborough Center Overlay District to convert what is an existing office commercial building into five small one-bedroom apartments and one commercial space. It's about a 12,000-square-foot lot, I think about a 3,500-square-foot building. The intent is not to change much of the exterior of the building, except to add necessary doors and egress to, so that each new unit has two egresses, which is required by code. The property is on town water and town sewer. There will be, other than those new doors and a couple of decks and stairways, there are no real changes to the exterior of the building. I've submitted floor plans, a site plan, and some pictures of each side of the building. There really won't be too many changes. So, in the rear of the building, there is a single-family residence located on Bird Street, so we're proposing to add some arborvitae's in the rear corner to provide some screening for them. We're proposing to take the roof drains from this building and recharge them underground, and also to remove about 900 square feet, plus or minus, of pavement, and replace that with lawn. So the goal is to gently improve the drainage in the area by doing that. So I know we're on a tight timeframe, we've been in before. I'm happy to answer any questions, or keep talking.
So I may, I may, you know, in the early part of the presentation, are we gonna retain the commercial space that, in the first floor?
There will be one commercial space, it will be in the first floor that faces Mechanic Street.
Right. And then, will there also be, will that take up the entire first floor?
No, there will be, so it's six small units, a small commercial and two residential on the first floor, three residential on the third, on the second floor. And I believe the building will be. there are no real changes to the exterior of the building. I've submitted, uh, floor plans, a site plan, um, and some pictures of each side of the building. There really won't be too many changes. So, in the rear of the building, there is a single-family residence, uh, located on Bird Street. So we're proposing to add some arborvitae's in the rear of corner to provide some screening for them. We're proposing to take the roof drains from this building and recharge them underground. And also to remove about nine hundred square feet, plus or minus of pavement and, and replace that with lawn. So the goal is to, uh, gently improve the drainage in the area, uh, by doing that. So I know we're on a tight timeframe, we've been in before. I'm happy to answer any questions or keep talking.
So I may, I may, I miss, you know, in the early part of the presentation, are we gonna retain the commercial space that, in the first floor?
There will be one commercial space, it will be in the, uh, first floor that faces Mechanic Street.
Right. And that, and then will there also be, will that take up the entire first floor, or?
Nope, there will be, so it, it's six small units, a small commercial and two residential on the first floor, three residential on the third, on the second floor.
Okay.
And, um, I believe the building will be sprinklered. I think we have a comment from Chris Gallagher, which we kind of anticipated that if there's additional sewer capacity, Mr. Gibson will have to pay for it. And obviously all of the mechanicals will need to be designed.
Is it on sewer now?
It is on sewer now.
I don't see a site plan here, it's just.
As you're entering the Union Straw parking lot, building on the right.
Yes.
The brick building.
Yes.
So, just some quick, um, comments from other boards, no objections from the Board of Health. As you mentioned from Chris Gallagher, um, he's gonna do a comparison of existing flow, any new, new flow will have to be, um, uh, paid for. Nothing from, uh, nothing from Mike Grace or at the, at the Police Department. I believe that's it.
Can I, I, I actually forgot to mention one thing. So in the general business district, which is the underlying district, there is a zero sideline setback. In the Foxborough Center Overlay District, there's a ten-foot sideline. And as you can see on the east side of the property, in order to create that egress, we're about two point two feet away from the abutter on that side, which is me. But, so, we're asking in addition, which is within your power, for a waiver of that, uh, ten-foot sideline.
I think I'd have to talk to the abutter first. Okay, um, any questions from the board?
Just clarify for me, cause you were talking about, uh, additional flow. And I thought you said if available. Well, aren't you gonna need more flow anyway?
If needed.
Well.
You will need more, wouldn't you?
I assume so, because it's, it, when you compare residential to commercial, yes. I mean, whatever, however, Chris designs it.
I thought you said if available, I'm sorry.
Right, no.
Yeah.
Whatever we need to do, we'll do.
So, and he, he, he said in his, in his note that they'll do a comparison flow once everything's constructed and they'll figure out.
And this will require a separate water line for sprinklering as well.
Right. Anything else from the board?
No.
Anyone in the audience that's here for this particular matter? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, close the continued public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Is there, uh, no other further comments? Do I, uh, do I hear a motion? Is that a motion?
We did make a motion in.
Okay, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that for the approval of the public?
No, that was just a closing.
That was just a closing, I was, I was asking for a motion for the approval, that's okay.
For the approval, two things.
Yes.
We'll wanna just make some brief findings as to why you're approving it. I would imagine it would be the housing and, you know, small units in high demand, whatnot, minimal impact. But, um, and then also it's a roll call vote, cause it's a special permit.
Okay, and also just to, um, approve the waiver for the.
Yeah, and the waiver, exactly.
So, do you, do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second.
Anyone, uh, all those in favor?
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin, aye.
Jeff, aye. Gary, aye.
Is Tom on, no?
No, I don't think so.
Are you good? Thank you very much.
Jeez, so we got five minutes, but.
Okay, yes.
Just giving you chairs. Here we go, extra people. There's three chairs up in the lobby.
Hey Paige.
Jeff wants to know why don't we just keep the hearing going, you know, just mullings in on the balancing the mess.
Um, you can't, you can't really run a special permit without four members.
Yeah.
Frank agreed.
Yeah. Okay.
So we'll get them set up.
Maybe quarter past. Twenty past the latest. I think what we'll have to do at that point, go to the birds, we'll just have to try to go and find out and continue it at that point.
Oh, yeah.
All from beach. The curse of the Panagopolis Brothers strikes again.
Do you want to come to the monkey chairs over here? Do you wanna make another announcement, Kevin, about the time constraints?
About the what?
About the time issue, cause we've had more people come in.
So, there's a lot of people here this evening and I just, and yet, some of you were not here when I made an announcement in the very beginning of, of the meeting. Because this is a special permit, we're required to have at least four members here for the entire thing. Unfortunately, Mr. Peterson got a call at seven PM telling him he had to make a call down at, um, Mass General and he has to leave here approximately eight fifteen. So, most of what you're gonna have this evening, I can tell you, is gonna be presentation-wise, which means we're not gonna really have an opportunity to get to most of your questions in the order. We may be able to, may be able to get to some, but we will continue it and we'll have a full board the next time and you will all get an opportunity, committing that you will get a free, free and fair opportunity to comment, question, and, um, excuse me?
We all object.
Yeah, we all object.
We all object.
Well, you can object all you like. I mean, I, I'm, I'm just being as honest as I can be. We, there would, there will be a continuation to the hearing and you will have every opportunity, just a moment, sir. You'll have every opportunity to make all of your questions, comments, and complaints regarding the project at that time. If we can get to some of them this evening, we will. If we can't, I, I apologize, but unfortunately, it was an emergency thing for Mr. Peterson and we can't continue it once he leaves. So, um, I hope you understand, I, I know, I know you're busy and I know we're taking your time, but unfortunately, it's just one of those things in life.
Well, we're being enough people here to vote next time?
Yes. Yes.
Well, we think so, but also to clarify.
I don't wanna waste my time.
Well, I understand, I don't want you to waste your time.
Just to clarify, these people are residents, they're people that have regular lives, so yes, they always try to come to these meetings. There, there's no, I understand that, sir, but there's no guarantee, I'm sure they will be here, but just understand, this, life comes up and that's what's happened, we have two members traveling right now.
Continue it to after Labor Day when everybody's back from vacation.
Uh, I don't think that's gonna happen, sir. Because the applicant, because the, the applicant has already filed.
We had a preliminary meeting back in April. Nobody was notified, the reporter didn't report it, nobody knew about it.
Excuse me, that's untrue and I'm not gonna, you're taking it out of order, sir. Excuse me. If you can either, you can either behave and be a part of the meeting, or you can leave.
I won't leave.
Well, then you can quiet, you quiet yourself down.
He may be aggravated, but he does have a point.
You know, and I disagree with this point.
All times, we have an absentee member on the board tonight. We should have had this back in May.
That's, it wasn't filed in May, sir.
They're out of their lives today to come here for this and yet you, the town, can't supply the sufficient people to allow this meeting to take place. That's sad.
Well, it's not sad.
No, it is sad.
Well, no, I'm sorry, sir.
I've been in New York at three o'clock in the morning and I'm here.
We're wasting time, Kevin.
The more you talk, the less time we're gonna have to even open this hearing.
We should have it back in May, two weeks after the April preliminary. But just the butters got notified and reported, they're not reported.
Well, excuse me, the law says that only the abutters are to be notified. We don't have to notify beyond that, that range.
I wasn't even notified about the two warehouses down the end of Willis Lane.
When you're back to hometown street, that's not true.
That's right, Beach Street ain't gonna become ninety-five.
Keep talking, John.
I think we should hold off the presentation then, because this is basically. Before the next meeting.
Excuse me.
They can make their way back.
Take it down a notch now before we close the meeting.
I'm very calm, but this is ridiculous. You know, for example, we're gonna go home and forget about it.
No, we're not asking you to forget it.
Why don't you take this matter up first instead of.
Because you can, it's on, it's on an agenda and it's, has a start time and that's the requirement, sir. We don't make those rules, that's the requirement.
Let the chips fall where they may, right?
If that's the way you wanna say it. Yes, Mr. Spleen?
Um, Attorney Frank Spleen here for the applicant. We're willing to continue it, if that's in the best interest of the, um, board and the meeting, or we can proceed, whichever the board prefers. I'm sorry. The applicant is willing to.
He has a mic, he has a microphone.
The microphones only go to home, they don't go audio through here.
Uh, Attorney Frank Spleen here for the applicant. Um, we're willing to continue, uh, the hearing till the next meeting in two weeks, uh, for the board. Or if the board desires, we can do our presentation this evening. Whatever the board prefers, we're willing to go along with, um, whatever you feel more comfortable with.
What's the next, what's the next date?
June twenty-third, but it won't.
It might.
We have other matters.
What do we have there?
We have two oh four East Street and we have an A and R.
Just those two?
Exactly.
What, two oh four East Street's another public hearing?
That's scheduled for seven thirty.
What was that? Who said that?
I said it.
Thank you, John, you're showing your class, I'll tell you that.
I got class.
You do?
You should have put it in the recorder.
Really?
There's a reason why these people are angry, okay?
And why would that be? You haven't even heard the presentation, how can you be angry already? No. We have, we, we have somebody who's asking us to continue a hearing, so you guys can all attend. So. Twenty-third?
We'll let it build up.
At what time?
Yeah, I'd just like to say. Let it build up. The disdain that you are showing for the people that are here, I see people smiling, laughing, like this is a joke.
Do I look, do you see me laughing, do I look like I laugh?
I'll tell you what.
They're being kinda hostile towards us, we have a problem with what's going on here.
Fully agree.
You cannot mean.
Do you ever hear about karma coming around?
All I said, I seen smiles from the majority of the people up there.
You never saw one from me, did you?
I'm incredulous, what's happening here?
I'm incredulous to your, your attitude, you showed five minutes prior before this all started.
Talking to me? What time was that, the twenty-third?
Two oh four East Street is scheduled for seven thirty, so you could do seven fifteen or seven forty-five.
But two, how long will two, like, two oh four East Street's kinda contentious too? So I don't know how much time we need on that one, like.
Or you could do it at eight o'clock.
Is everybody gonna be here June twenty-third?
I don't have anybody who's not gonna be here.
Are you here on the twenty-third?
Yes.
I texted him, but, yeah.
Eight o'clock?
But now, if, yeah.
No, just one minute, just one minute, I'd like to speak. So we're.
I'm sorry, is my one minute up?
Yes, no. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna continue the hearing till the twenty-third of June at eight PM.
Better find a larger location. Yeah, cause this is gonna go on. These high-control East Street, you still want to keep doing, doing, and doing. We can't water our lawn, but you keep building.
The guy's driving around one o'clock in the morning looking to be the waterman.
The pump station went on, but not the water research involved on this. But you keep building.
We, we don't make those promises, wait a second. This board does, has nothing to do with the water system.
Whoa, 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 whoa. You voted the pump station, no, no. You closed things down, you voted the pump station.
We did.
But you keep building. We can't supply water now, but you wanna keep building. How does that, they say? National grid is here, you ask the reliability question to a lot, okay? Is this piece of equipment going to make our system better? The answer is yes. Is building and building and building and letting your residents not use water, not being able to use East Street because trucks go forty-five miles an hour of it, okay? Then it's one point seven miles longer, it goes from forty to twenty. Are we serious? Serious, are we serious? A one point seven mile road goes from forty miles an hour to twenty.
Can I ask you something?
Residential street.
We, are you gonna?
There is the action to take care of that.
Excuse, excuse me, I'm about to move this hearing, sir, so you'll have plenty of time to talk. This is not the night.
The thing is, you keep putting people off, that's what you have.
I'm, I'm, we're not trying to put anybody off.
No, we do, okay? Explain that's why you're a room full of angry people. Because you keep making judgments and going against it. You put a rule in place back years ago when you refigured Beach Street with the Craft Crew.
That's right.
You have failed one hundred percent on every two hundred and two people that live on Beach Street and the two hundred people that live off of Beach Street.
That's right.
Four hundred total residents on a one point seven mile road and you cannot control it.
That's right.
Okay? My name has been rear-ended, it didn't get reported, okay? A truck went through five people's properties, it didn't get reported. Trucks hit their limbs hanging over the trees.
That's right.
The town comes out and cleans it up. You can look at the records, but yet, no track or trails were allowed on the street when you refigured it. But now we have traffic trailers hauling down the street once Foxborough Terminal closed and Craft Crew owns it. Isn't that convenient?
Exactly right.
What do you do for the residents when I cannot safely pull out of my driveway on Beach Street? Honestly? And if you don't believe me, sit my passenger.
I'm not saying I don't believe you.
Have an AC wheel come up the road and I'll pull out with you and a passenger.
I'm not, I'm not saying I don't believe you.
You don't do anything!
You don't care, Kevin.
Well, I, I disagree that I don't care.
I moved here in two thousand and fifteen.
That's right.
Okay, I've lived in many towns, on many homes. This is a catastrophe, okay? What are you putting everybody in this room through for a, a factory? Are we kidding? We need a factory, seriously?
Well, it's not a factory, we don't know what it's gonna be.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We respectfully request that the hearing be continued to your next hearing date and time appropriate and I request that, um, the board vote on that at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. No, there's not gonna be any more questions, we're gonna move the hearing to June twenty-third at eight PM. June twenty-third?
No, they're, they're, they're scheduled to go before conservation next Monday.
I can't ask, you'd have to ask the applicant whether they're gonna still appear before conservation.
Anybody else here who's been informed as an abutter who's three hundred feet didn't have to receive the conservation one, so I wanna know that this meeting is being moved to June twenty-third. Is the meeting conservation on this project?
If we continue hearing, it's gonna be here, it's gonna be here. At seven o'clock. Which the locals do not know.
Do you mind saying that?
So my problem is that if we continue hearing, it has to be here, cause we don't have another location. So we can do it somewhere else. State and time.
The conservation, uh, hearing will be, will be heard on Monday.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, we can't go, so.
Yes, we're just continuing this, this hearing. Uh, request is going forward. No withdrawing or anything like that, we're just continuing it because of the circumstances. We'll continue forward with the conservation hearing. Which is, again.
It is.
The only purpose of that is just to determine where the wetlands are.
Oh, there's a lot of conservation in that area too.
Is there a motion on the table that I hear?
Well, we're not doing many work.
Vocations being determined. So, our concern is, is like, trying to squeeze everybody back in here, so trying to find an alternate location. Once we, once we move. Once we move it, we want to be able to say it's going to be, you know, in a specific place, not here, because I think it's going to be as bad or worse than that. So, I don't think we can, you know, the question is, do we move it to, you know, three weeks or four weeks and then try to set it up at the Ahern School somewhere else?
That would be rough. Would that not be going at all?
If we do, if we move it more than just the two weeks, we're going to have to re-notify the abutters and everything, especially if you change the location. But if I do that, then they're going to presume that this is the location. Right, and that's what I'm saying. Should we just say, give ourselves more time to find the alternative?
Kevin, you have to continue it to a date and a place.
Yeah, I know.
No matter what.
Whoever recommends a high school auditorium, but we'd have to, we need time to, you know, we need time to re-notify people. And, I know, I'm saying we couldn't...
Why'd you have to re-notify us?
Well, we have to do a date and time certain. We don't know if the auditorium is available. We can't just look. I mean, we can say it, but we can't. We don't know if it's available right now.
There's no good answer here. I mean, you can force it here and open it here and continue it at another location. That's just people's life, dude.
I mean, they're going to look for any, for these properties to like, do anything that...
Right. I don't think we're...
No. High school auditorium is the place. We don't know, but we can't do it right now. That's the problem, but that's where Mike, that's the only other place we could do cable. June 23rd, probably. But I didn't know if it was...
If everybody will just settle down for a minute, we'll talk about the extension of the meeting. So, our intention is to continue the meeting until the 23rd of June at 8:00 P.M. For tonight's purposes, it will be at a date and time certain here, but in the meantime, we are going to try and find an alternative location because, as you said, there may be you guys, all of you, and others, so we want to try to make an opportunity, give it an opportunity to have a larger venue, so enough of you will have an opportunity to speak and not be all jammed and standing in this room. So, for right now, it's continued to June 23rd until 8:00 P.M. Here. If we find another location, we will announce it and, you know, and we'll make sure that everyone knows and you'll have an opportunity to attend there. If we have to hold it here, we will.
In the meantime, would it do any good to send in letters of opposition to the board?
You're welcome to do that at any time, yes. You can send them by text, you can send them by email, you can send them by hard copy.
Yeah, it has to be read out loud.
How will the meeting be announced?
Well, right now, it's being announced for here.
But if it changes...
If it changes, we may start it here and say, we've been fortunate enough to get it to the Ahern, please follow us over there, or the High School, please follow us over there.
Or the stadium.
Or the stadium.
We're trying for the High School.
We're going to try for the High School.
We're trying for the High School because that's why I was consulting with cable, is that's where they have the setup for cable access. So, that, if, best case scenario is if we can get it in the auditorium at the High School, but of course, we can't find that out tonight. So, that's our problem, and we need to continue it to a date and time certain.
Will the information be posted on the city's Com and Towns website?
We can do that.
For the location.
Yeah, and we'll try, we probably could send out notices to the abutters. Again, it's not going to be everybody, there is a legal list, we could do that, and then it would be up to neighbors to let everybody know, but we can easily do that.
Is it possible that at that time, one person's schedule could disrupt a 100 people's nights again?
Anything can happen, but no, I mean, that's not typical here. Normally, we have a full complement at every meeting. It's very rare. Two people are traveling right now, which limited it to the four you have here, and then Mr. Peterson got an emergency call at 7 that he has to be somewhere at Mass General at a certain time. So, I'm sorry about that, I truly am. I, you know, I know that doesn't make you feel better that you came out here and spent your time this evening, but we do want you to have the opportunity to hear the presentation, make your comments, make your, ask your questions, and give us your complaints so that we can do our best to give you the protections that we can. So, you know, yes, the developer will have a right to work on their property, but yes, it's also our responsibility to do our best to make sure that the neighborhood is accommodated. And while there may be some people here who don't think that we do that, there are others who do. So, thank you, and we'll see you on the 23rd. Well, let's take that in the form of a vote. Yes. Right? So, I'd make that in the form of a motion. We'll continue this to the 23rd at 8:00 P.M. Here.
I love it when they attack you before you can say it.
Well, you know, probably for the best. Well, it would have been ugly. They were busy talking over here before you even start, before they even opened up there to make a presentation. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to compliment you on the...
Well, thank you, I mean, but it's a shame because, you know, the truth of the matter is that we're not here on behalf of the applicant. We're here on behalf of the town, and, you know, they have certain rights guaranteed to them, and, but we do our best to like, you know, I mean, him telling me that we changed the water system and we're responsible, I mean, that's not our job, we don't do that.
Well, if not else, this little demonstration might have given more reasonable people like a sense of, you know, like stuff in this.
I told Diane, she said, it's going to be, I said, you'll see it. She said, what do you mean? I said, there'll be, you know, pitchforks and torches out there, you'll be able to see her on the house.
Well, Billy had said that, but I didn't anticipate this.
Trying to rethink my vacation time. I think the 23rd is a good time to go.
They're still on.
So, you said it.
I need to drink a water.
Actually, isn't it? It's a... Yeah, 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 yeah. Started to get up there, I ran out of time. Paige has all the video. We're probably not as bad as we look.
Now you know why.
Thank you, dear, for coming up. Thank you, thank you.
I haven't seen you in...
Long time?
Not since it was...
That is a, that is a long time. And how's our doctor? How's our doctor?
Doctor is pretty good, she's in New York.
In New York, huh?
How about you guys?
That's great. Honestly, gosh. Thank you for coming up. Appreciate it. Have a good night. That's, you know, it is, comes with the job.
We own six hundred tractor traws, 67 years of business, I live over there. So, the way you handle that, you know, my...
Thank you.
There's only so much you can do.
Right, and that's, you know, it's like...
But I don't know if we sent them all to your colors, about $200,000, which is really about...
Yes.
Well, that was me. Like, no, no, that was me, like yakking. Oh, I know, I know.
So, this is one with tractor traws, all I know, and no, so, they can go down Beach Street, because it just...
Well, in a way, it's almost better. Not that I, believe me, this is my fault, I got called out, but it's almost better that this got a chance to cool down and, you know. Thank you very much. Very gentlemanly. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. No, 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 it's on business, believe me. It's not a personal matter. Thank you for asking.
We have Jeff here, which is probably not for us, but we don't know it.
I know, this is, I actually work in the funeral business, and I, it was an emergency call to go out, so...
I don't know why I took my finger.
You on the computer?
All those years I was a selectman, I never used a goblet.
I know, right?
Yeah, that's right.
It's not, it's 7:05.
He said, what is he taking?
Oh, well. How exciting.
Seven, Brian loves it.
There was somebody else on that thing.
How about on Zoom?
I forgot about it, I thought the meeting was over.
Nobody's on Zoom? Nobody's on Zoom? Not that I know of, I mean...
I forget, I mean, I shut down, I forgot, I thought we were going, I thought the meeting was ending. Is that him?
Good evening, this is Kevin Kilduff. Right there.
Hold on, let me log back in. If we could get Ron in here, Ron! Frank, can you try to grab Ron for us, please?
Ervin Kilduff. Well, it's essentially, it's essentially, this guy is...
Ron, is that Brian? On the screen?
Turn around.
No. No? Good evening, can you hear me? Were you expecting your client to be here?
Shall I call him?
Oh, they're probably the neighbors, they're probably the Norfolk neighbors, yes, okay. Sorry, I got discombobulated by the, the little...
So, are we going to open this? Brian's here. Brian's on. Brian's on. All right, it being sometime past 7:55 P.M., we have an ASBIL plan review and discussion for Forenet Road for universal automation. Just so everyone here understands, it's a discussion, it's not a public hearing, so we're not required to take input from the audience, but let us go through the process and we'll see where we go with it. So, Mr. Buckley, are you representing this gentleman, or is he going to speak for himself?
I think Mr. Sullivan will speak for himself, but I have filed a, I need the board access to do an ASBIL drawing, so we did a partial site ASBIL as of February, no, it wasn't February, it was like, May 29th or something, not last week, but the week before. And what we did is, we located all of the improvements on the site that existed at the time. At the time, the final pavement hadn't been placed, so some of this has been overtaken by events, but Mr. Sullivan can discuss the changes that were made. I just want to point out that like, on every project, you know, on every site plan, it's never exactly according to plan. So, you know, some of the, there's always some issues or comments, you know, something could be just as simple as, gee, I don't like that type of plant, I want to put this type of plant, or, you know, we'd like to move a parking space or something. So, you know, you read the letter and say, geez, there's an awful lot of things, and there really is not a lot here. Some of them, I listed as, I don't, in my opinion, they don't impact the design at all, things like the water line, gas lines, things like that. Some of them, I think you should discuss, and, but Mr. Sullivan has already talked to Mr. Shippey about some of them, he's responded by email, and I think you'd be the best person to address the items that I brought up in the letter, and I assume it's, he has it. Brian?
Good evening, if I may as well, this is attorney Kevin Kilduff, I'm here on behalf of Forenet Road.
Would you like to speak?
I would, I just, I just want to make sure that the Sullivans are, I know that Brian's in attendance, if Brian could just identify himself as well, and then I'll start addressing some of the items.
Yeah, I'm here, can you guys hear me? I'm present.
Yes, we can.
All right, very good. Now, would you like me to address some of the items that were brought to our attention, or would you like to raise the issues that you have some concerns with, and then we can directly address the issues that you raise?
Well, why don't you start, and then we'll, we'll fill in, we'll backfill after you're done.
Okay, terrific. All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to address what I consider to be the easiest issues first. So, one...
I forget, I mean, I shut down, I forgot, I thought we were going, I thought the meeting was ending. Is that him?
Good evening, this is Kevin Kilduff.
Your client, right there?
Hold on, let me log back in. If we could get Ron in here, Ron! Frank, can you try to grab Ron for us, please?
Ervin Kilduff.
Ron, is that Brian? On the screen?
No. No?
Mr. Buckley, are you doing this?
Good evening, can you hear me? Are you expecting your client to be here?
Shall I call him?
Oh, they're probably the neighbors, they're probably the Norfolk neighbors, yes, okay. Sorry, I got discombobulated by the... The little...
So, are we gonna open this?
Brian's here, Brian's on.
Oh, he's on, okay.
Brian's on.
All right, it being some past, sometime past 7:55 PM, we have an Asbilt plan review and discussion for Forenet Road for universal automation. Just so everyone here understands, it's a discussion, it's not a public hearing, so we're not required to take input from the audience. But let us go through the process and we'll see where we go with it. So, Mr. Buckley, are you representing this gentleman, or is he gonna speak for himself?
I, I think Mr. Sullivan will speak for himself. But I have filed a, planning the board asked us to do an Asbilt drawing, so we did a partial site Asbilt as of February... No, it wasn't February, it was like May 29th or something, not last week, but the week before. And what we did is, we located all of the improvements on the site that existed at the time. At the time, the final pavement hadn't been placed. So, some of this has been overtaken by events, but Mr. Sullivan can, can discuss the changes that were made. I just want to point out that like on every project, you know, on every site plan, it's never exactly according to plan. So, you know, some of the, there's always some issues or comments. You know, something could be just as simple as, gee, I don't like that type of plant, I want to put this type of plant, or, you know, we'd like to move a parking space or something. So, you know, you, you read the letter and say, geez, there's an awful lot of things, and there, there really is not a lot here. Some of them, I, I listed as, I don't, in my opinion, they don't impact the design at all, things like the water, water line, gas lines, things like that. Some of them, I think, you, you should discuss. And, but Mr. Sullivan has already talked to Mr. Shippey about some of them, he's responded by email, and I think you'd be the best person to address the, the items that I, that I brought up in the letter, and I assume it's, he has it. Brian?
Good evening, if, if I may as well, this is attorney Kevin Kilduff, I'm here on behalf of Forenet Road.
Would you like to speak?
I, I would, I just, I just want to make sure that the, the Sullivans are, I, I know that Brian's in attendance, if Brian could just identify himself as well, and then I'll start addressing some of the items.
Yeah, I'm here, um, can you guys hear me? I'm present.
Yes, we can.
All right, very good. Now, would you like to me to address some of the items that were brought to our attention, or would you like to raise the issues that you have some concerns with, and then we can directly address the issues that you raise?
Well, why don't you start and then we'll, we'll fill in, we'll backfill after you're done.
Okay, terrific. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna address what I consider to be the easiest issues first. So, one of the issues that was raised was the wearing coat of the pavement. Now, obviously, at the time the last inspection was conducted, that had not yet been completed. Approximately 10 days or so ago, the final coat of paving was installed, and that has now been, you know, fully, fully completed. The, the, the last coat of three to four inches of asphalt were installed on May 31st, 2022. Obviously, with, without the final wearing coat of asphalt having been placed down, there was no striping at that time as well. The striping has been scheduled, now that the final coat has been applied, the striping has been scheduled, but it has not yet been installed, but it is scheduled to be installed, you know, prior to the end of the month. The, there was a note regarding signage regarding notifying drivers of five-minute idling limitation and no beeping of horns. Again, there was a notation that that sign had not been installed. As of today, it has been installed, and that exists as we speak. There was a note made related to the absence of a fence surrounding the dumpster pad. The, there was originally a fence surrounding the dumpster pad. That fence was knocked down by the dumpster company as they were removing a dumpster in, in the past. That fence has again since been replaced. So, that fence is now, again, as we sit here today, that fence has been reinstalled.
Can I ask you a question about that?
You may.
So, I was on a net road today, just, you know, taking a ride by the property, and it didn't appear to me as if there was any enclosure in the front. So, it's a three-sided fence right now? Is that, is that, is that your, is that what you're, you're saying? Because it didn't appear to me that there was any kind of a gate or anything in the front of the dumpster, just so that...
I, that's, that is my understanding. Brian, could I ask you to confirm that it is a three-sided fence enclosure? Is that accurate?
Um, the, the gates on the front, we install tomorrow, they actually, we're here today working on the fence, and they have the, the gate piece was broken on it, so they're gonna be back to, to it. But I can send you pictures on it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. The, there was mention of the concrete handicap ramps on, on the existing sidewalk, that those have again now been installed. So, that item has been addressed. There was a mention of the, the fact that no guardrail had been installed at the edge of the detention basin, all right? That issue was addressed by the planning board in the DPW. They were brought onto the property, we discussed that issue with them, and an agreement was made to address that issue, and we addressed it in accordance with the wishes of the DPW to their satisfaction. And I believe I have a, a document to that effect, which, again, I can email to the board following the conclusion of today's meeting.
Can you tell us how they, how you resolved it?
Brian, can, can you address specifically what, what the DPW requested there and, and the changes that were made per, per that letter? Because I know I have it in my email, but I don't have it open in front of me right now.
Instead of doing the wooden fence, we ended up putting a vertical, vertical granite curb, elevated granite curb to block it. Bill Buckley had done a drawing for us, and we submitted to the town for approval and to DPW, and they came up, approved it, and we had that installed.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Bill, you wouldn't happen to have that letter with you tonight by any chance, would you?
I might, but I, I did just, I just nodded to the chairman that yes. It was me, the town engineer, and Gabby Jordan coordinated that change.
Okay, all right. And if, if you have that with you this evening, by all means, feel free to deliver it to the, to the board, and if not, I'll make sure it gets delivered to them tomorrow by email.
Okay.
All right. There was mention of the solar panels that were not installed, but the solar panels were to be installed in an area away from the building, but that area was never cleared, so the, at this point in time, my client has, has decided not to install those solar panels. If they change their mind and they do clear that land, they will, again, they'll, they're committed to adhering to all of the obligations that they made as it pertains to the solar panels. But as of right now, the solar field is, is not in the plans right now.
So, I, again, I was on a net road today, and I'm gonna presume there must have been some clearing up there because there are many vehicles on top of the land where the solar panels were, what the array was supposed to be. There are, there were probably eight, seven, eight, nine trucks there out of back home, and I could see from a net road. So, I guess, so there has to be some clearing that happened there, I don't know how much, I didn't go up onto the, onto the area. I just saw what I could see from a net road. And, and my other question pertaining to that is, how did those vehicles get up there? Because it's, you can see from the street that it's huge boulders and, and gravel and rocks, so it didn't appear to me that there was an access from a net road, so I'd like to know how the trucks got there.
So, the, the top surface there is all of the crushed stone that was the result of clearing the, the lot below it. So, all of that, that area is crushed stone that was the result of clearing the lot for, for a net road. Those vehicles were placed up there in order to accommodate the paving of the, the parking lot, which I made mention to earlier, that was completed on the 31st, and to allow for the striping. As soon as that is completed, those vehicles will be removed from there and placed back into the parking lot, you know, where they have been since the temporary certative occupancy has been issued.
But you didn't answer one of my questions, which is, how did they get there?
They got there from a, an access driveway from a net road.
Where's the access driveway?
As you approach Forenet Road from Route 1 and you take a right, if you go up about 50 to 70 yards, there is a, an, a pathway that, that can, that can access the top of that, the top of that area that you're making reference to.
Okay, I'll, I'll further address that as we go along.
Okay. All right. There was a discussion regarding the lights in the parking lot in the front of the building. Again, I, I believe the original plan may have highlighted some pole lights and lanterns. Instead, what they've, what they decided to do was, but there was also some concern from the neighbors, both, well, primarily in the back, on, on the Norfolk side, that they were concerned about the lighting and the pole lighting and the amount of glare that those lights could, would create. And as a result, an alternate plan was established to reduce the amount of glare resulting from the parking lot lights. So, a number of uplighting were installed in the front of the building. So, there are more than 20 lights in the front of the building that provide more than adequate illumination for the building, but don't create any glare for any of the residents on the Norfolk side, on the Freedom Trail side of Norfolk, that would eliminate the glare that might otherwise bother the neighbors, you know, in, in the back of their properties from the Norfolk side. So, the change that was made was done to eliminate glare issues, but still provides more than adequate illumination for the, for the building and for the parking.
Let me just interrupt you for one second and ask Mr. Buckley a question. Bill, do you know that if those replacement lights, do they meet the town criteria? Are they like shoebox lights, do they just have a down light?
I, I think they're ground lighting. Am I right, am I right there, Brian?
But he said there were poles.
No, there were supposed to be two poles in the front, on the parking lot, and they've been eliminated. And I, I'm pretty sure it's all ground lighting, shining up toward the building, so...
Bill, it's ground lighting that lights up the front of the building to reflect to the parking lot first, uh, the pole.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, that's not something that was approved or reviewed by this board?
Right.
Traditionally, you know, the dark sky, I mean, it's not necessarily...
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, so it's not something that we got a chance to look at.
So, I...
But there are more than 20 lights that, that provide that uplighting for the building.
The point that Paige is making is that in their, in their, they're, they're wanting to not disturb the neighbors in, in Norfolk, they, and not bringing it back to us or some other, or some other, probably board, the building inspector, somebody, to look at that. They're, they're, they're not voiding, but they're creating an issue that we try to, to control in this town, which is to make sure that all lighting is downlighting. It doesn't, it doesn't shine up into the sky, whether it's directly in a neighbor's yard or not. And that's in any commercial setting, you know, even if there's not a neighbor right nearby, that's, that's the right, that's what we do. So, all right, well, we'll set that aside for the moment and come, we'll come back.
Okay. And I believe the only other issue that I didn't address are trees that were not planted in the back of the building. In, in the original plans, there was, it was anticipated that a swath of land behind the building would be cleared. And at that time, when the swath of land was to be cleared, again, to provide some buffer between the back of the building and the, and the neighbors to the rear of the building, it was originally anticipated that some additional trees would be planted along there to serve as a buffer. However, that swath of land was never cleared, it was not touched in the, in the course of the construction of the building. And as a result, those trees were deemed not necessary because that, that the land was not cleared. And as a result...
Who deemed, who deemed them not necessary?
Planting additional trees was deemed not necessary.
No, who deemed them not necessary? There was an order of conditions, and that was part of the order of conditions.
Well, Kevin, I can, I can answer that.
It was the order of conditions if the land was clear.
During, during construction, Norm, at the time, was our engineer, and he did come tell us that there was extreme ledge right there and that they could not do it. So, it was documented by Norm that there was just too much ledge right there to do it. There is, however, I don't know, I know the exact number, 40 or 50 landscaping trees shown on the plan that were not planted, you know, according to...
In addition?
Well, no, the, where they were, there were, I don't know what it is, 40 plants or what?
Along the back perimeter?
Along the back.
So, but, but that, that in itself, so if you got relief from the trees, it doesn't mean that you don't have to do the same thing in some other fashion, like a fence or something else that provides the protection to the neighbors. And while I'm bringing that up, one of the main concerns from the beginning of this project from the neighbors, and it was proved during the construction, was that there was concern that Mr. Sullivan would be bringing equipment and/or personnel from his home site through the back and onto the, and onto the construction site. And that's still a concern, because to our knowledge, you know, from hearing about it from people, that still seems to be the case. It still seems to be the case that there is an access way there. It's been used by Mr. Sullivan, his family members, and perhaps some other members of the community back there who find that as an easy way to cut through and come down to a net road as opposed to taking another method of egress to get around to either Route 1 or wherever it is they're trying to get to. So, that has to be addressed tonight, because there, in that order of conditions, it was made very clear that there, that was unacceptable for there to be any movement of people or mechanical, you know, equipment, cars, trucks, construction equipment from the Norfolk side onto the property and/or through the property. And I don't believe that that's been resolved. So, whether they can do trees or not, I do believe that the board's gonna require Mr. Sullivan to put some kind of a fence up there. If he wants to have a two-foot wide or three-foot wide opening for a man gate to walk through personally, I don't think we can tell him he can't do that. But there cannot be an opening wide enough for any mechanical or, or automotive vehicle or anything like that to continue to pass. And, and so that's, that's something that we have to address tonight, attorney.
So, it's 50 trees, I did count, so just, so it's almost like in the bank, shall we say? Typically, when someone can't build the landscaping as proposed, they come to us and the board would say, okay, well, then you need to plant those trees, or like you say, do something else. But it's 50 trees that were not able to be planted due to ledge.
Right. But I don't, you know, trees or not, I mean, I think, like I said, I think we need to make some other type of barrier there that, you know, protects the neighborhood and, and prevents any further access of automobiles, trucks, any other mechanical equipment coming from the Norfolk property of Mr. Sullivan onto the site and/or back from the site, onto Mr. Sullivan's property. That's, that was clearly in the order of conditions. Now, the fact that the trees can't do it, there's another method, and we have to find that.
I don't have the order of conditions in front of me, but if I, if I could, if, if you have them there, could I ask you to read that order of condition for me?
I haven't...
Yeah, just a moment.
Thank you.
You don't have a copy of the planning board decision that was issued for this project?
I do, and I'm looking for it as we speak right now, but I, I'm, I'm not able to locate it right now, and that's why I'm, I'm hoping that you may have it available. Actually, you know what, I may have found it.
I have an idea, she millet, she has it.
Yes, yeah, no, I, I have it right here.
Yeah, I know, I'm also looking at the conversations, condition 13, but let me just, I also, there was some narrative in there that was also, "There shall be no vehicular or equipment access between the property at Forenet Road and Freedom Trail." And then, let me just find some of this. There's anything?
So, a- as we sit here, I, I will tell you the following. As, as I interpret this order of conditions, and I wasn't at the hearing where the order of conditions was laid out, so I want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear on that point, but as I read this condition, it prohibits the use of vehicular traffic between a net road and Freedom Trail. That, there is no traffic between the two, between the two roads. So, what my understanding of reading this, reading this order of conditions is that the town wanted to prohibit the, it's, that the, that any pathway from serving as a cut-through between Norfolk and, and Foxborough, and that a vehicular traffic were to go from Norfolk to a net road, that they wanted that vehicular traffic to go around, you know, the normal way, through Route 1 or whatever other access, normal vehicular traffic would be. But that is for through traffic between a net road and, and Freedom Trail. There, there's nothing in here that, as I read it and I interpret it statutorily, that would prohibit the owner of a net road from, you know, placing vehicles at the top of that...
I'm not worried about them placing vehicles, I'm worried, I'm worried about exactly what you just said. Passing from that home and/or Freedom Trail through there and down. And that, to, to my knowledge, we've had complaints from the neighborhood about that happening.
Yeah, but you, you made mention earlier about the, the vehicles being at the top of that, being at the top of that area.
You gave me an answer about that. You told me there's a side trail that they got up there. I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about access from Mr. Sullivan's home and/or Freedom Trail through there and then down onto the site and a net road.
All right, and that's what, that's what I'm stating to you, is that there is no through traffic from a net road to Freedom Trail. Nobody uses it as a cut-through. The Sullivans don't use it as a, as a cut-through.
Excuse me, sir, I beg to disagree. We have, we have people who are sitting here right now who will disagree with you, who will tell you that they see the traffic coming from his home through there, onto the site, and onto the, and that's wrong. So...
The Sullivans themselves, perhaps, not through traffic, not through, if, if you were to drive...
You know, the Sullivans themselves is through traffic, sir. The idea that they cannot, the whole idea here is that they cannot access from Norfolk onto the construction site and/or its build-out finished.
And we were very, we were very clear.
That was made clear to Mr. Sullivan from the beginning because people worried about it, who were his neighbors at the time. And it was made clear. So, I believe that Mr. Sullivan is aware of, of the feeling of this board about that, and I believe that they is going to have to construct a fence there and prevent vehicle traffic from coming from his location off of Freedom Trail and onto the site.
My, my understanding, if I may, and allow me to finish, please, is that the board was concerned about vehicular through traffic and cut-through traffic, not one person or two people, Mr. and Mrs. Sullivan, driving from their home to their, to their commercial building.
The number of people is irrelevant, sir. That is a cut-through right there. And you cannot, you can, you can talk me around the planet 32 times. I'm trying to make it as clear as I can, as politely as I can, that Mr. Sullivan, if he wants this thing to continue... he wants this thing to continue on the way it's going to continue, he had best get a fence up there. He had best close that off and not allow vehicles from himself, his wife, his children, or any of his buddies coming through there and onto the site. If you prefer to, you know, make this a court matter, I guess we could always do that, and I'm sure the people who are sitting here right now, who see it happening on a daily basis, would be happy to testify to the fact that that is what's going on there. You know, I, I don't mean to be disagreeable. I mean, I, I like, to be honest with you, I'm very impressed with the building that Mr. Sullivan built. I think his main site looks terrific. I'm sure he's a fine businessman, but this is one sticking point that he has continued to go on, and I'm trying to let you know as politely as I can, it's not going to stand.
Should we schedule a site visit?
Yeah, would you like us to schedule a site visit? We can all go up there and take a look at the, the access ability from the home and onto the site and beyond.
That's certainly within your right.
I'm sure, I'm sure the members of the board would be happy to, to meet up there.
All right. And I still have some question as to whether or not this board has the legal ability to, to hinder or, or to draft and make conditions as it affects neighboring towns.
Let me ask you this, sir. What about, what about, talking about the legal aspects of this entire project, did he have the ability to occupy his building without even a temporary CO for weeks and months until a new building inspector got in there and gave him a temporary? As a matter of fact, I believe he is still working under a temporary. Why is that? I mean, no offense, Mr. Sullivan did a very nice project up there, but I believe, as politely as I can say it, he has stummed his nose at this town through the entire thing, and I don't like it. And, you know, you want to, you want to tell me we don't have the right to do it? Let's settle it either here and let him do the polite gentlemanly thing, or as his attorney, you can make a recommendation for him to how he can pursue it from a legal perspective. I can't tell you what to do, you're a lawyer. It's my job to protect the interest of this town as the chairman of this board, and you can disagree with your interpretation of what was meant by the through traffic, and I can have a different interpretation, and if necessary, I guess we can let a judge decide. I don't want to do that. I just want him to be a gentleman and deal with it.
I certainly think we could contact, sir, I certainly think we...
My legal advice, I don't make rec, I don't, I don't make decisions. I'll, I'll happily discuss that with my client, and, and, you know, we, we can, we can certainly address it, not a problem.
And to clarify, I'm sure if you checked the zoning bylaw for the town of Norfolk, commercial uses are not permitted in that Freedom Trail zoning district. And as you probably know as an attorney, there's plenty of case law where access is considered part of a commercial use, so if you are using a residential area to access commercial property, that is not permitted. So that is what, it is a known thing throughout the state that we do not, you cannot cut through unless it's allowed, and if you could show us that the Freedom Trail area is zoned to allow access to an industrial property, I have a feeling that the Norfolk building inspector and/or zoning enforcement officer would have a problem with access to a commercial business through a residential property.
And, you know, I'll ask, again, I'll ask, Mr. Sullivan, would you entertain the opportunity for the board to meet you up there and take a site visit and take a look?
Sure, I don't have any problem. I mean, I'm willing to block off the access there if that's what, if it, if that's what the board would like.
Okay, when, when do we want to schedule that?
I, I just, I said, I'm willing to block the access off if the board would like that.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you?
He's willing to block the access off.
I said, I'm willing to block the access off if that's what the board would like.
All right. So if that's the case, then there's no need for, for an onsite visit, then?
Well, there will be a visit by night. I'd like a site visit, sir.
Well, that's fine, you're more than welcome to have a site visit. Just give us a time to get arranged to get it blocked off, and then you can have a site visit.
I'm sorry, you'd like to get what blocked off?
I would just like to take a little bit of time so we can block it off before the visit, or you want to do before, it's up to you.
No, I think we want to do it so we can see what's, what the condition is, so we can come to a, a joint agreement about what that means to block it off.
Okay.
We need 48 hours' notice, so we'd have to do something. We could try to schedule something for early next week at the board's availability.
Monday, can we do it Monday? No?
Yeah, well, no, we can't, not Monday, it would have to be after Tuesday because of the posting.
Okay. So after Tuesday or by, or like...
Uh, let's see, we need, so we'd need to post it tomorrow, so you'd have to do 40, so it'd be sometime Tuesday. Did I, did I check my math? Yeah, sometime Tuesday.
Let's see what the weather looks like. Don't want to get wet.
Tuesday or after, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Tuesday's beautiful.
Tuesday. What time do you want to make it? Paige?
What works for you guys, where, I mean, I'm...
Want to do 10:00 AM?
Sure.
How about Tuesday at 10:00 AM?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine, okay. We'll see you there.
So, just to clarify, we'll, we'll do a site visit. The board can't deliberate at that, at that meeting, that's just a, you know, a meeting to view it, and then we'd have to discuss. So in the meantime, if the applicant wanted to come up with a proposal for blocking it off, because that's not something necessarily that, that board would want him to just decide. I mean, there are, actually, I just found the updated site plan, and there are actually 60 trees that were to be planted. So you have a credit of 60 trees and/or some sort of fencing, whatever you decide on that.
We, we put 20, we already put 25 trees in the front.
Were those approved, and those approved per the site plan?
They were not on the site plan. We added them in the front to make up for places that we couldn't put trees. So we put 25 in the front of the building.
So typically, in order to do these things, you, you know, you came to the board for permission for a certain site plan, and typically you build it to the plan, and if you don't, you seek permission to change it before doing it. So I guess the board will have to, perhaps during our site plan, then, we can take a look at what's out there, and you can determine how you, you know, whether you feel that's adequate and, and what's next. But typically, you don't do things without permission of the board. So we, so do we want to continue this, do the site visit and then continue this discussion? Probably not till June 23rd.
Right. No, probably not to June 23rd.
Right, exactly.
Unless we do it at like 7:01.
That would be July 14th would be the next one after.
So we'll do the site, we'll do the site walk, and we'll continue this, the, the final visitation to this to July 14th, is that what you said? At what time?
Nothing on the agenda, so you want to do it at the beginning?
Yeah, although that's a long time, so I wonder if there's a better way to manage this. What time, well, June 23rd is a disaster, but how early do we have? What do we have in the...
The first public hearing's at 7:30, I got nothing before that.
So maybe we do it at 7, you know, 7:05 or whatever.
7:10.
Yeah.
July 20, June 23rd?
Yeah, it's not a public hearing anyway, we could change it, but that way we can, you can see the site, and then you could take action sooner rather than later, and that...
So we would just move the, continue the, the discussion till June 23rd at 7:05. And we'll do the site visit on Tuesday at, is it Tuesday we said, at 10:00? 10:00 AM.
And we're going to post that tomorrow at the town clerk's office.
Mr. Chair, just to inform you that I do believe his TCO ends tomorrow. How would you like that addressed?
How would you like to address it?
We can, we can wait until after the site visit, and then we can go from there, and I can work with Paige, and we can work with Mr. Sullivan and come to an agreement.
I think we'll need an upgrade, sir.
We'll, we'll probably leave it till the 25th or so after June. That way we have a decision on June 23rd and see how we end up there.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Because there's a couple outstanding, so the lighting, I think we should have an updated photometric plan on that. I mean, you know, you can't just throw lights in typically, so you should probably know what this lighting does. Does it provide, you know, Tracy's always very concerned about lighting, adequate lighting. We're going to, we'll have DPW check the, the paving and the drainage, just make sure things are kind of flowing. We don't have Norm anymore, so we can have that looked at in the meantime. Should be addressed, what are the trees, pavement striping? When did you say the pavement striping is occurring? May 30? No, not May, June?
They told me they'll have it by the end of the month.
End of the month, okay. Handicap ramps, we'll get those checked, because I think you said those were done. We'll check the, the dumpster. So we could kind of take a look at all of those things when we're out there.
Right down the list.
Yeah, okay. So, so in the meantime, if you could work on the lighting plan, that's going to be an important consideration. The board takes that pretty seriously.
Very good, thank you, Mrs. Sullivan, Mr. Kilduff. Appreciate your time tonight.
I appreciate your time as well, thank you so much.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.